Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, April 19th, meeting of the Board of Directors of the Dover School District. If you would please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Benko. We have roll call, please.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahausser?
Here.
First on the agenda tonight is presentations and celebrations. Mr. Cherry.
All right, so at this time, I'm going to kind of switch the order. Jen, I think you were supposed to go first. So if you don't mind, I'm going to call the Dover Eagle Foundation to come up and celebrate with some of our staff members around the district.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having us out. It's good to see you, members of the public and administration. We have an exciting evening tonight. We're here to talk about some of the work that we've been doing on the Dover Eagle Foundation. And recently, we put out an opportunity to have folks in the faculty, teachers, apply for grants through the Eagle Foundation. So it's an exciting time for us to be able to actually award some grants. We had five or six that were presented. We did approve six or four more. We're going to get some more information passing down the road. So what I did here tonight is we have Ashley Golden. She's in the Spanish. She's a Spanish teacher with the school. She's not able to be with us tonight, but Ashley was actually a recipient. She has a program that is focused on using performing arts and generating interest for advanced Spanish classes at the high schools. So Ashley's program was awarded a grant. And I was kind of twisting arms as folks walked in. I'm going to introduce the teachers that applied, and I thank you for taking the time to do that. And I also twisted their arms so maybe they could do a 30-second commercial on how this grant money is going to impact the students of Dover School District. So I'm going to put, I talked to Matt and Nick. So if you guys wouldn't mind, you can, you know, play, you know, draw straws as he gets to do the intro, or if you could just give a quick explanation of your project and how it's going to impact the students. And then we'll have a, we have a big check for you.
Okay. I'll start. We use, our main thinking was, what can we do that's going to affect every student in the school? So that's kind of like the angle that we went at. And one of our biggest things is two mobile green screen labs. Right now, it's mobile in my room, which is very nice. But it has been used already for our fifth graders that went on the field trip to Gettysburg. They've already used it to create some really neat things. We did PSSA trailers using iMovie, using the green screen lab already. And we're just excited to get the other ones. So other teachers, and then honestly, to teach the teachers what it's all about. And I think we've only touched the tip of the iceberg with it as well. But I think we'd like to get into school announcements and things like that with the green screen.
And the other project was actually creating a mobile STEM lab. So, and again, getting some items for that lab that all the students within the building can use. Teachers can sign out the lab itself, different components within it, that then they can take to enhance student learning through really hands-on experience. So some of those were little bits, which are magnetic electronics. So you can create really cool projects with those. And it teaches the kids how to, really, the ins and outs of electronics and how they work. So whether it's switches, whether it's fammers, sounds, different things like that. So it really gets them hands-on, creating, being creative, creating new things from it using that technology. One of the other things which is really neat, coding is definitely a huge thing now. And we got a Spiro Spark, which is basically a programmable, you code, the kids can write code to actually have it go through different paths and different obstacles. So it's just a ball that you control remotely, but you have to program it to do the things that you want it to do. So it actually teaches them how to code, how to then adjust and modify that to actually get it to go through the different things that it wants to do.
So again, thank you for taking the time to apply for the grant. There was a number of documents and obviously the creativity to come up with it and really caring about the students enough to put it next to everyone. So thanks, guys. We do have a check for you here. So if you want to take, if you want to take a picture. We'll let you guys hold your check. As I said, we did award, we did award three grants. And we also have Caitlin Nether here with us this evening. Caitlin also applied for a grant that was approved. Caitlin's project is, I jotted down, the Osmo Mirror. So again, Caitlin's here, and she's going to help us understand what the Osmo Mirror is going to do for students at Dover.
The Osmo is a new technology that works with the iPads. So I'm getting four of them through the grant, and I have four iPads in my classroom. So what I'll be able to do with that technology is it makes the iPads even more interactive than they already are for the students. It creates like a playing base on the table for the students. And the Osmos come with manipulatives such as timgrams, letter tiles, that the students can use with different apps that the program has. So there's one called Letters, which is phonics base. So it would put up different phonics patterns for the kids. And they would use the letter tiles, which actually we've approached the program in first grade conflagration. So the kids are used to working with these letter tiles. Then the kids can manipulate the letter tiles on the table. And then the iPad actually sees what they're putting down. And so it's self-checking, so it's something that the students can be working on when I'm with a small group. And it's brand-new, so I haven't actually seen it in action. I've watched videos about it. I know that teachers are using it in classrooms. So hopefully, once I experience a depth mirror of it, I'll also be able to push it out. Because it might not be something I'm using every single day, but I'll be able to also share in my building. Because we each have an iPad in the classroom, at least one. So it's something that could also share with other teachers.
Caitlin will give you a big check. And just to put in a little plug, the Dover Eagle Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The monies that we're giving out tonight, the foundation really has two goals. One is scholarships, and the other one is grants, grants back into our district. That's the sole focus of what we do. So again, thank you for the teachers, all the teachers that took the time to apply for the grants. And thanks for your attention this evening, or we thank you for the time.
Thank you, Shane. We have one more celebration before we jump into Jen's presentation. Sorry, Jen, I keep delaying you. So, and this actually is to celebrate one of our board members. So one of our board members has served 10 years on the York Adams Academy. So I would like to take this time to present Mr. Terry Emmig with a certificate of appreciation from WyCal and others thanking you for your 10 years of service on the York Adams Board.
Okay, I'm going to give you an overview today along with Ken Phillips and Lauren Eby from RBC Capital Markets on our debt portfolio and capital reserves review. So Dover's current debt profile, currently, the district has six outstanding bond issues. There are successive issues that have been structured to create a wraparound or approximately level payment structure schedule of approximately $5 million per year. Our debt schedule is a very short-term schedule. It's 10 years long. We have a solid credit rating. And our debt service as a percentage of budget is equal to 8.8%. The state rate average is over 10%, so that's definitely a positive, you know, in our favor. And our debt service as a percentage of total budget in York County, you can see we are sixth in the county at 8.8%. And that also averages approximately 10% with the highest, the lowest being 7% and the highest being 12.6%. So our outstanding debt profile, like I said, we have six outstanding issues right now. We have the 2008 Delvaux note issue, which financed various capital projects, and it was a combination of fixed and variable rate debt. We have a 2011 bond issue, which refunded 2001 bonds with a savings of $317,000. And this bond issue will actually be paid off at the end of 2015-16 fiscal year. The 2011 A bond issue refunded a portion of our 2006 bonds, realizing savings of $417,000. And with this bond, there's an opportunity for refunding the summer of this year, 2016. 2013 bond issue, it refunded remaining 2003 bonds, realizing savings of approximately $530,000. And just recently, in the summer of 2015, we refunded a portion of our 2010 bonds through two Series B note issues, which were bank loans, in July and August. And those realized savings of approximately $583,000. So those are all our outstanding issues. And we can go through each one of them. Our 2008 bond issue is up in '24-'25. Our outstanding payments right now are 18 million, or as of '07-'16, will be 18,345,256. Our 2011 A issue will be up '20-'21 with outstanding debt payments of $10.5 million. This is the one that has the opportunity for refinancing this summer. And Ken Phillips will be speaking, and Lauren will be speaking a little bit more about that one. The 2013 issue, outstanding debt payments of $2.9 million that will be paid off at the end of 2018. And finally, our current, once we did this year, 2015 A, outstanding debt payments of $11.5 million that will be paid off in 2027. And Series B of that issue will be paid off also in 2027. And our outstanding debt payments for this year are $9.4 million. So just summarizing that information, I know that's a lot of information to kind of put together. But this is our total gross outstanding debt. You can see, you know, our short schedule there of 10 years. And our total outstanding debt payments as of July 1st, 2016 will be $52.8 million. And there you can see our profile and how it just, you know, kind of keeps a level payment structure of approximately $5 million, as noted in the first one. So now we would like to talk about future capital projects and debt planning. So preliminary projections for 2016-17 show an ending general fund balance of approximately $12.68 million. Our projected capital reserves, available funds at that point, it's the end of 1617, are at approximately $9.6 million. And so these reserves that the district has built up over the past several years have put the district in position to utilize those funds for capital improvement projects, whether it be renovations or buildings, with minimal addition to the taxpayers of the district. So as I spoke about the $9 million in capital reserves that we're projecting, if you take our beginning fund balance of almost $7 million, our 15, 16 projected expenditures for our capital projects funds through various projects that we have done throughout the year are going to be about $1.3 million. If you remember, a few months ago, we took some assigned fund balance from general fund and moved it over to the capital reserve fund, about $4.3 million. And just the interest up to this point is $7,063, which gives us current capital project fund balance right now at this point at about $9.9 million. On the agenda for tonight, you have D-10 projects that are proposed for 1617 that we'll be working on over the summer. And those projects total $366,000 almost. So that would leave our projected available capital project funds balance to be approximately $9.6 million. So now I'm going to turn it over to Ken and Lauren for their debt refinancing and future capital projects financing review.
Want you to sit here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity, as always, to be here. We're going to break the presentation into two pieces. Lauren's going to review the refunding piece first. And then we're going to review sort of the material that we did this July, you know, when we had the very first look at what happens if you want to plan for a capital project under Act 1. So I'll turn it over to Lauren for the beginning.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. In front of you tonight, there's also a packet of what we brought. It may be a little difficult to read it up on the screen because Jen's numbers were a lot, and these are going to be even more. So you may want to feel free to turn to this as well. Jen did an excellent job summarizing the district's outstanding indebtedness currently. I would like to point your attention to page two. And as Ken goes into his part of the presentation tonight, the district does receive some monies from PlanCon reimbursement. And I know that that's a hot-button issue and a big question mark going forward, and will certainly be for any capital projects that you're considering in the future. However, on page two, we do reflect the net outstanding debt service for the district. Because you have gone through the PlanCon process on previous projects that you've undertaken, you do receive some subsidy monies from the state for those projects. And if you look at the bottom of, I can dance this for you, the bottom of the 2011 A column, you'll notice that the state share on the bonds that are in question for the refinancing is about 26.5 cents on the dollar. So when you refinance bonds, the state likes to take their share of the savings as well. So anything that we do garner from the refinance, the state will take approximately 26 cents on the dollar of that money. So turning to page three, this is just a snapshot, sort of a picture in time of where we stand on the 2011 A bonds and the opportunity to refinance them. There's about $9.5 million still outstanding over about five years at an average rate of 2.87%. Very low. As you may recall from Jen's presentation, that was actually a refinancing in the past. So this is most likely the last opportunity that we're going to have to do a refinancing on this stream of cash flow. Because once you hit that five-year mark, really, there's, it's very difficult to squeeze any more savings out of something that's so short-term in nature. The earliest that we can act on this with an actual settlement is 90 days prior to the call date. And the call date on the bonds is October 1 of this year. So you're looking at nothing any sooner than July 1 of 2016. The blue boxes then contemplate kind of two points in time, 90 days prior to the call date and add the call date. If you look at the first row, the approximate refunding savings, given where interest rates are right now, so understanding that there's a little bit of time between now and July when we can actually lock up the rates. We're looking at about $150,000 savings on this. Again, we're not going to light the world on fire on this last financing, refinancing, because there's just not enough time left to garner that kind of savings. But it is probably significant dollars, and it's more of a housekeeping issue more than anything at this point in time. 1.5% on a current refunding is a good target. If you were doing something in an advanced refunding basis, you may be looking for something north of 2%. But with only five years remaining, 1.5% is a really good target, I think, for this. And then waiting until the call date, you know, you'd garner slightly more savings based on the fact that you're closer to the call date and you don't have any negative arbitrage in the escrow. So we're looking anywhere basically from a range right now of $150,000 to $190,000, depending on when we pull the trigger. So let me point you to the next page, which talks more about timing considerations. Should you pursue, decide to pursue the refinancing, we would recommend that the board takes legal action sometime in May or June of this year. And as you've done in many of your past refinancings and other financing opportunities, you've done what's called a parameters resolution and a parameters BPA. And what that does is it sets forth maximum principal and interest rates. And it allows your bond counsel to file those documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, as every school district in the Commonwealth has to do whenever they do a financing. And by doing so, then it gives your financing team the flexibility to then pursue a couple different options. We can look at bank loans, sort of like we did back in 2015. And we can also then evaluate the bond market and say, what's the best deal? What's going to get us the most savings to the district on this? And the parameters allows us to go down that dual path where we can talk to local banks, talk to your depositories, see what they're willing to offer, while also, since we market bonds on a weekly basis, see what the bond rate would be for a transaction like this. Then, should we pursue that coming in May and June? We'd likely start the preparation of all the legal documents and filings and going to the rating agencies if need be and talking to the banks in that June timeframe, so that come July, August, we can be either in the market for a bond issue or looking at bank rates like we did on the 2015 issue. With the ultimate goal of hopefully settling sometime in August or September, like we said, the closer we get to that October 1 date, the better. But there's always that element of interest rate risk. And on the last page, I did throw a footnote in there of kind of what interest rate changes do to the savings. So any increase or decrease of five basis points or so results in $15,000 either to the good or to the bad based on, you know, that interest rate increase or decrease to your total savings. So we want to be cognizant of rates and rate movements and Fed actions and everything like that, understanding that we really can't move any faster than July 1 at the earliest. So that would be our recommendation on timing at this point. Can I ask for any questions before I turn it over to Ken to talk about some bigger numbers?
One thing we always try to do, and it's the same thing we've done here for 25-plus years, is we have no idea what the market's going to do. Okay? It's really, we all read the same papers. We all have our own opinions. The numbers that we have provided on the refunding piece, that's why we provide the sensitivity analysis below. We have about a quarter of a percent cushion built into these numbers. So the savings are closer to the 200-plus number. But we have no idea based on what's going to happen next couple of months. The Federal Reserve desperately wants to raise rates, they really do. They're probably going to raise rates, in our opinion, probably at their June meeting. Okay? But there's so many global pressures on interest rates that we don't think that they can achieve their ultimate goal of four or five raises in 2016. They had their first raise in December of a quarter percent in 11 years. And the market actually went down. Down meaning improved in terms of interest rates. So we have some cushion built in here, only from the standpoint that who knows what's going to come in June and, you know, May when we start maybe looking at some documents and so on. But if there's no questions here, then what we'll do is, is we'll turn to page, that page, page five on your handout in front of you. And in discussions with Jennifer and Ken over the last two months and the meeting that we had last July, we've continued to refine a projected project financing structure. Based on the numbers that you have given us, we were asked tonight to come with roughly $60 million of financing needs. And the schedule would be getting, starting the project on a rapid timeframe sometime next year in '17, and then getting, needing the balance of the money in '18. If you remember in July, when we met, we were looking at maybe something a little longer, a 19, 20, 21 type thing. But the project is going to be obviously directed from you with respect to the timing, the need, and so on. And so I applaud you, as I did in July. Under Act 1 in Pennsylvania, as you know, your hands are tied a little bit with how much you can raise from a millage standpoint. Jennifer reviewed with you the amount of money that you have in the capital account. And you've been putting that money there for that rainy day. Well, the rainy day, if you go forth with a project, the rainy day is here. Because you're going to see that these studies utilize some of those funds to help phase in any type of millage as required for the project. Not a lot of districts have this type of money that they can put at a project. But under Act 1, it's very important to have another pot of cash besides what the index gives you on an annual basis. So we applaud the due diligence of this board and previous boards in terms of positioning yourself in such a manner that if you do decide to go forth with a project, whatever the magnitude is, okay? You have some money that can help ease in the millage over a period of time for the taxpayers. So with this document, which is similar to what you saw in July, except we've now accelerated a little bit, it anticipates $60 million of needs. And when you look at the spreadsheet, the very first column is the total net debt service outstanding. And Lauren reviewed with you the net debt. Jennifer's numbers, you know, focused pretty much on the gross debt. PlanCon is something that you're eligible for. You haven't gotten it this year, but we do think that you're going to get it. Okay? And we do think that you'll be made whole on previous projects. But right now, in the budget of the school district, fourth column from the right, you have 3.44 mils in place for debt service. Okay? That's important, and the brevity of your debt is important. As Jennifer said, it only goes out pretty much 10 years. So that's important because we're going to structure the new issue in a wraparound fashion, meaning that we're going, if you look at the blue columns, you see that there's pretty much a constant number in the first seven, eight, nine years that represents interest expense. And then we start to kick in principal in '28 when your old debt goes away. Okay? It's pretty much under Act 1 how districts really need to take a look at things. Because raising, if you did it on a level debt basis, which we've done that in the past as well over the last 25 years, you need to put more money in place, and it's just hard to do under Act 1. So this structure, we think, is the best structure for discussion purposes as we are now. So what this shows is column one, the total net outstanding. We then show a 2017 issue, and we show a 2018 issue, both at $30 million. And let's just look at the footnotes. Footnotes two and three, highlighted in blue as well, anticipate an August of '17 and an August of '18 issuance of debt. And then we have an average rate of 3.9, an average rate of roughly 3.88, which are current rates plus 60 basis points. So again, we always try to put some contingency in because we don't know what's going to happen with rates. So we have some contingency, just like in our refunding studies. Local effort 100%, meaning no state reimbursement. Okay? We're not planning on that. Okay? So when you look at the columns, you then see the pink column says less interest earnings, school district reserves. And you see that total at the bottom, $4.9 million. So this illustration utilizes $5 million of district cash. What that does is it's used over a period of time, a period of years, as you see here, to even out the green column, which are the new millage requirements. So if the district needed to raise $60 million, using $5 million of your own money, using the interest rate assumptions as we show in footnotes two and three with some contingency, you would need to go up roughly a quarter of a mil, maybe slightly a little more, over the period of time, 2017-18 through pretty much 2023-24. Now, if the board decides, and you're currently in your budget scenario, you could actually put something in place in 1617, which would then maybe, if you put even a tenth of a mil or two-tenths of a mil, then that's going to have some impact in reducing what's needed in the future. And we would probably, as we said last summer, we probably would suggest that if you are embarking on a project, okay? And Dover's never done anything in a frivolous manner. You borrow money when you needed money. If you're going to embark on a project and you can afford it in your index this year, it makes sense to get a head start. Because you know, when you look at this page, you're going to need to commit to finding those equivalent mils. And I'll say equivalent mils, because maybe you can find some other cuts or things in the budget that you're going to take from this pot and put it over into debt service pot. You can do that as well. But you need to come up with an equivalent basis of roughly a quarter of a mil, okay? Let's turn to the next page, and then we'll go into questions. Because all the next pages, same assumptions, except now we're using $6 million of your reserves, not $5 million of your reserves. And you can see that the quarter comes down slightly, okay? You still need to get to the same number, but in essence, we're doing it over a little longer period of time. We're spreading it out a little longer because you have an extra $1 million to help do that. But in round numbers, if in your mind you think roughly a quarter of a percent of a mil a year, based on the assumptions now from the market, we need to basically commit to that every year for the next eight years or so. And that pretty much gets you to where you need to be to fund $60 million. No plan con reimbursements in here, the interest rate assumptions, as we stated, are in here. But the reserves that the district has put away for that rainy day, done a very good job of saving some of those great windfalls from refundings and from the constant maturity swap that you made $3.5-plus million on. All that is really good, because it's going to help you, no matter what you do project-wise, borrowing-wise, it's going to help you to phase in a period of mils over a period of time, okay? So, a lot of information. Hopefully, the presentation and the time we spent last July, you know, gives, you know, some of you some comfort with the studies and comfort with the structure and the analysis. But now we'll open it up. Ken, for any questions and comments?
Questions?
I have a question. On the new millage, it's listed there as about a quarter of a percent down for a period of about eight years. At that point, is, according to these projections, everything would be level at that point, there would be no need to continue that process?
Right. You'd be fully funded, you'd be fully funded. When you look at the column, third from the right, total mils in place, it says 3.44, and then that gradually goes up to five, and I'm looking at the $6 million study, the last one, goes up to 5.28. You're then fully funded at that 5.28 mil-wise until your debt starts to fall away. If you look in the far right-hand column, out in 2020, or '38-'39.
Kind of a scenario, could you envision that a project could be funded without having to raise any taxes? What kind of difference would you be looking at? Just curious.
Pretty much under Act 1, it's almost impossible to do. There are debt instruments, arrows in the quiver, if you will, called capital appreciation bonds, which is pretty much like a savings bond. They're 0% bonds. But they're sold at a discount. So for example, if your debt falls off, when you look at the very first column, your debt falls off in '27. You have $4.2 million in the budget, okay? If we were going to say, you know, we're going to issue capital appreciation bonds, you would need to go out probably to the year 2050, '55. Because the $4.2 million has today's present value of, let's say, two and a half, and that goes down every year thereafter. So to get to $60 million of proceeds, you'd have to issue very, 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 very long debt. In an instrument that quite honestly, it's an arrow in the quiver, but it's not used that often, because it's, they're just, they're very expensive. They're very, very expensive. But without raising taxes for a new project of any magnitude, okay, under Act 1, it's impossible. Unless you can find it in the budget somewhere. So in essence, when you look at the green column, if you could find 1.84 mils in the budget somewhere, permanent dollars, not cash, permanent dollars. So you're going to take, and I'll just make it easy, we're going to cut out transportation, whatever that costs you a year, and you're going to take all that money from transportation, okay? And we're going to put it into debt service, into a different silo. Because you have money in your budget now for transportation. Legally, you don't need to offer transportation. But obviously, it's something that no district does. But if you can find Mr. Cook a permanent dollar in the budget, maybe you can find 0.84 of them. You know, it's, but to fund a project of this size of any magnitude would be very difficult because of Act 1. That's why planning is so important.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just one quick question for you, Ken. We're obviously still in a relatively low interest rate environment, so borrowing now is probably a good thing to do if we want to lock in a lower rate. What is your long-term projection on rates? You know, which way is the wind blowing today on rates?
We think quite honestly that they're going to continue in the historically low environment. We're pretty much in the bottom 5% of where rates have been for 60 years. The global pressure is on the market, even though the Fed really wants to raise rates, the global, the global pressures, what's going on overseas and so on, is going to prevent the Fed from doing what they want to do. So we think quite honestly, rates are going to remain fairly low. Do I, and I personally think they're going to stay low for at least the next one to three years. But again, we can't predict it. We've done a pretty good job, the district has over the years, of taking advantage of really good markets and taking advantage of ideas. But it is a good time to borrow money. But again, the district's always done the right thing in terms of not borrowing it frivolously. But if you have a project, getting, starting a process like this, committing to, you know, putting mils in place down the road, unless you're going to find them somewhere else, you know, what we've got to do. What we'll do then is we'll work with the administration with respect to the refunding. We'll get some dates, we'll get legal team involved, we'll get everybody here to do some resolutions for that. And we're more than happy to come out again this summer if we want to continue deliberate this, look at this, if you're changing size, timeframe, et cetera, we're more than happy to do that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, so, moving on, and as Ken had talked about the idea of equalized millage things and the increased millage effect for the next, you know, 10 years or so. Just saying, the possible, the potential effect or the worst case on an average tax bill. The average tax bill would increase approximately $35 per year for a period of six years, for an approximate increase of $210. That impact could decrease, though, if, you know, we got state debt subsidy funding, you know, the plan con process evolves and we actually get our money. Additional capital reserve utilization, so maybe instead of using $6 million, we use $7 million. And of course, lower project costs. I think what we had given Ken Phillips was definitely on the higher end of a project. So you take that down to $50 million or $45 million, that'll definitely decrease that tax burden on the taxpayers of the district. So those are some ways that we can get some of those equalized mils. So moving forward, and I apologize, for some reason, this slide seems kind of small. The administration will need consensus to move forward on the following four items. We need to identify scope of work of a building versus renovation project. We would need to create a project team. We would need consensus to submit out RFPs for architectural service. And also, the final step there for now would be inviting Crabtree Roar Bar to present the results of their feasibility study at a make committee meeting. So we wanted to put those out there, maybe start some discussion on your end of, you know, where do we as administration go from here? And that's the end of my presentation, so if we could maybe move forward with some of that discussion, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Benko, Mr. Phillips, and Ms. Eby, for your time. And thank you, Mr. Patterson and Ms. Justin Schielev, I think, for the foundation efforts. Thank you very much for all of that, so. Moving on in the agenda, we have our student reports.
All right, so I'll be starting with Dover Elementary. They had a kickoff assembly program to get their students excited about the PSSA testing. Their students have completed the language arts PSSA tests and are now completing the math PSSA testing. Their PTO will reward their students for their hard work with an icy treat from Rita's. And two students in each classroom were recognized by their peers for displaying ownership skills as part of their PBIS program for the month of March. Moving to live, live students in grades three through six are also working diligently to get ready for the PSSAs. They have school-wide support and pep rallies, including an outrageous motivational video. Live students and families collected $630.71 for Leukemia and Lymphoma Society through the Pennies for Patients campaign. Several PTO events that are coming up are in science fair, April 8, 2016, family skating party, April 16, and dine-out night at Ross Brothers BBQ on April 20. Moving to North Salem, the sixth graders are beginning their lesson on Biz Town and preparing for that trip. And also, third through sixth graders are working hard on their PSSAs as well and are following the motto of "I believe in myself." And lastly, Wagglestown Elementary, April 19 through the 21st, they are doing the math PSSA tests. Wednesday, April 20, the PTO food night at McDonald's is 4 through 8 p.m. And April 27 through 28 is science PSSA testing, grade fourth only. And also Wagglestown art show and musical recital that was originally scheduled for April 6, but is now moved to Wednesday, April 27, from 6:00 to 7:30.
Okay, and then moving on to our middle school and high school buildings. Again, over at our middle school building, they were working diligently on the PSSA testing. They kicked that off with a little PSSA preparation and a group prep rally led by Mr. Porment and Mrs. Mayberry. Their spring music concerts are in practice zone. Their band concert will be on May 4, and their choir concert will be on May 12. So definitely, if you guys don't have anything going on those nights, go out and support our middle school students. And then also, our band students at the IS building are preparing for an exchange concert via live video stream to James Hornsby School in Basildon, England. They're going to be performing multiple musical selections, including the National Anthem of Great Britain and United States. So that's kind of cool, doing that live stream across the way to England. And then moving on to our high school building. Myself, along with Joshua Hogan and Tyler Hess, and our two-deca advisors, will be traveling to Nashville, Tennessee. We leave Friday morning, and we will return back to Dover on Wednesday evening, hopefully with a national title to bring back to Dover. And then last week was National Assistant Principals Week, where we recognized our dean of students, Mr. Freed, and our assistant principal, Ms. Strawsball, for all that they do for not only our students but in the community as well. And then our softball player, Natalie Cutwright, she recorded her 100th career win, or 100 career hit, rather, yesterday in their team's win over West York, so very big congratulations to Natalie. Their musical, our musical program is busy preparing for their spring concert. Jazz night will be tomorrow at 6:30. And then their concert, their spring band concert, will be on April 30 at 7 p.m. And then the choir concert is scheduled for May 14. So if you guys, again, don't have anything going on those dates, we'd love to see you out of the high school. And then our students, instead of taking PSSAs, a couple of us had the pleasure of taking the NOCD exam. I was one of the students for the school board that doesn't know exactly what the NOCD exam is. It's both a practical test, so it's hands-on, and it's also a written 199 questions, multiple choice question test. And unlike the PSSA, it's more career-driven. For me, I took the marketing one, so we had to demonstrate sales strategy, customer service, virtual cash drawers, packing slips, inventory control, all of that hands-on. And like I said, that written part with good customer service, communication, marketing, it was just really cool to see a test that conveys your future as going into the workforce, looking at future career opportunities. Robert Mays was honored by the Daughters of American Revolution with a Good Citizen Award. So they recognized him for his dependability, service leadership, and patriotism. And then some of you guys might have seen the video that our students produced by our Eagles Eye Team for the Dora Life Locker Challenge. It was a challenge where they submitted this video in hopes of getting scholarship money and new lockers for the school. It was all produced film, they had a backing track written by one of our music, musical students, and it was focused on promoting the positivity and supporting everyone in the high school. So if you guys didn't have a chance to check out that video, I'd highly recommend it. I believe it's posted on the Facebook page and around the district, so definitely check that out, because it was a very, very well-done film by our students. And that's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Great things going on over there. Good luck with your competition and safe travels. Any questions from the board members?
I just wanted to get clarification. You mentioned, or maybe I misheard you, that Jazz Night at the high school is tomorrow night?
That is correct, yes.
I have that in my calendar for next month, on May 19.
Do we, Mr. Wosser, do you know?
I have it as May 19 as well.
Because there's a conflict with board meeting and Jazz Night, that's why I'm aware of it.
Dance over to the Jazz Night.
Yeah.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay, or if you have other things to do, you may also turn off too.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
May. Do you have the date in May?
I said it's May 19.
May 19.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda tonight is public comment. This is for items on or off of the agenda. This is a three-minute period. There will be a countdown clock on the screen as you make your remarks. So we welcome you to come to the podium. If you have anything you would like to share with us, any comments you'd like to make, just please state your name and your address for the record. Anybody? Okay. Next section, Board President's Communication. First item is the announcement of executive session. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel legal matters related to items that are on tonight's agenda, as well as things that are related to the upcoming budget process. Continuing in this area, we do have, you may have noticed tonight, somebody missing from the front table up here. We have received the resignation of our board member and treasurer, Kelly Mefford. So we will be taking action tonight to accept that resignation. I want to personally thank Mrs. Mefford, who is sitting back in the back row now tonight. She's obviously found a much better paying job than the one up at this table here. But thank you so much for your efforts for the students and the staff of this district. We appreciate all that you've done for us, so thank you. So with that, I move to accept with regret the resignation of Kelly Mefford as board member and treasurer for the Dover Area School District effective April 17, 2016. Is there a second?
I regretfully do the second.
Mrs. Benko, could we have a vote, please? We're having technical difficulties, but it does pass eight. We're having technical difficulties, but it does pass eight to nothing. So, thank you, Mrs. Mefford. There we go. Okay, that now leads us to the need to appoint a new treasurer for the district. This position will be effective through June 30, 2016. I would move to appoint Mr. Steve Cook as treasurer, effective through June 30, 2016.
Second.
And the motion carries. We do have 30 days to fill the vacancy with Mrs. Mefford's resignation. There will be information posted on the school district website this Friday, the 22nd, regarding the process that we are looking at. We will be having a special meeting here on May 10, beginning at 6 o'clock p.m., to interview any interested candidates for the position. And we will be selecting the candidate that night, so they will be able to join the boards shortly after that. So if you are interested in the position, or know somebody who might be, please have them visit the website at the end of this week for the information to follow. Okay, next is the appointment of a board member to serve as representative for the York LIU Joint Authority Board for a term which expires January 1, 2020. So I would move that we appoint Mr. Ralhauser as our representative for the York LIU Joint Authority Board for the term which expires January 1, 2020. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we're going to take a voice vote, so all those in favor say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is the DAESPA grievance. I would move that the board deny DAESPA grievance number 2016-01. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion carries with seven yeses and one no. Okay. I do not have any other communication items under the agenda, so we'll move on to the next section, which is the approval of the minutes. I move that the school board approve the minutes for the March 15, 2016, board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion carries. I move that the school board approve the minutes of the March 17, 2016, board planning meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And I should have asked for questions or discussion. Motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, we have our consent agenda. Before we vote, I would like to open it up for questions or discussion from the board members for anything on the agenda for tonight. So first, we'll begin with the Curriculum and Professional Development Committee, which would be Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Herman. Are there any items or questions for discussion?
National Junior Honor Society, has that ever been implemented in Dover before? It's totally brand-new.
Totally brand-new. It's something we have at the high school. We have the senior version of it, so this would be new at the intermediate school. So, thanks to Mrs. Mefford, who kind of planted that seed early on. So Deb O'Donnell has picked up with it and has worked with the committee at the intermediate school to get that up and running. So we're excited to have an academic society there that honors kids for 93% or above.
Any other questions on curriculum and professional development? Okay, hearing none. Facilities, anything related to the item for facilities? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to human and fiscal resources. Any questions for the items listed on the agenda for that area?
Yes, letter O. The projects. Okay, up at the very top, about the library technology, Student Union Media Lab. Is that what, would you address that?
Yeah, that was actually the project we talked to you a little bit about when you visited the high school, and we were talking technology about how can we better utilize a library space to be more collaborative? So, we simply have earmarked, we definitely don't have an actual project or scope of work yet, but we've earmarked $150,000 to convert the library into a collaborative space that allows kids to go there and do just more than library services. They can utilize their technology, they can work independently, they can work in small groups, large groups. And we've actually taken some time to visit other school districts around who have kind of gone through that kind of transition of taking an older library and making it more collaborative for students. So, we're excited to really kind of begin that journey, too. It's something that's been in discussion with Mr. Wosser and others. I know we visited Central, we were able to take a look at theirs. We visited Dallas Town recently and was looking at their projects. We also went to Tanner and Harrisburg, and we were looking at some of the blueprints that they even have for Cumberland Valley. So, I think it's an exciting time to kind of take a look at how you can convert something and kind of rejuvenate it and make it exciting for kids. One of the things that I promised a group of kids that I worked with about two weeks ago was actually to go back to the high school here in the upcoming weeks, go to the library and kind of sit with them and say, "All right, if you really wanted us to be an exciting collaborative space, what would that look like?" So, it's some work to do. The nice thing about that space is it's kind of wide open, so we're going to be reviewing the collection and working with kids, working with staff, to kind of talk about what do we want that new space to look like.
Okay, and then you had talked about having a cafe in there, and you had visited that. And then, I forget the numbers, but you told me how much that was to put in, but how much profit they have received from that?
When we visited Dallas Town, we talked to them a little bit about, they really looked like they had a mini Starbucks. Other than the green emblem, you would have thought you've walked into a really nice cafe. So, they spent about $70,000 just to get it up and running. However, their first year, they had a positive cash flow of over $100,000. So, within their first year, they not only paid it off, but they had a profit of about $30,000. So, when we visited, it was an amazing, we showed up, it was about 7:20. The line was down the hallway, not only to just get into the cafe, but just into the library itself, so where they had begun to design their collaborative space. So, the students had really owned a lot of what has gone there. So, for those of us who visited, I would clearly say there was 150, 200 kids there at 7:20 in the morning, all waiting to go in either the cafe or the library. So, once again, I think it's an exciting opportunity. One of the things that we've talked about, too, with our cafe, is how we can take our life skills students and make this a manageable project for them. We had that transition age of 18 to 21, where we need to be giving them more opportunities to have job-related experiences. So one of our thinkings behind this project was to really begin to think about how we could expand offerings to our life skills students, so that they're actually managing the cafe, they're running the cafe, they might be working with Andrea down in the cafeteria to come up with products that they can then turn around and sell. So, there's a lot of possibilities with that idea, and we're kind of excited. We recently contacted Starbucks, the local plant here, and we're getting ready to set up a meeting with them to talk about some type of partnership with them.
Okay, then this $150,000, that doesn't include the cafe, or does, is that, what are we going to do with that?
We haven't quite decided. You know, we were kind of taking these bits and pieces that we learned from other school districts, and because we keep asking them the same question, "How much did that cost you? How much did that cost you?" So, in our head, we're thinking, "All right, if we can do the cafe for $60,000, if we can..." Furniture is always expensive to buy. I mean, what's nice about the library as it is right now is all the walls are portable, so we can easily take down all those walls and have pretty much a wide-open space. So, a large percent of that money is for the furniture, with some other additional monies going for wire and tech upgrade. Until we kind of lay out the scope of work, this might also begin to be phased in over the course of the next few years, too, because you also don't want to interrupt the day-to-day instruction that's going on at the building, too. So, we might focus on getting the cafe, or we might focus on setting up collaborative spaces this year with the idea of adding more on. So, it was our best shot estimate at what this might cost, knowing that we may not get it all done now, we may need to phase it in over time.
Then, is that going to be in-house, or do we have to go out and get bids, or how does that work?
We'll probably do some of it in-house, and then we'll probably also get bids, too. So, I know Dave, we worked with a local architect that we were kind of pleased with, so we were talking about approaching him. Tanner also, Tanner Furniture has a lot of experience in this as well, so we've also contacted them to kind of come up with some blueprint ideas, too.
Okay, and what's a one-touch studio?
One of the things we were talking about possibly, and we might need to revisit it based on the grant that they received, was a one-touch studio is kind of where kind of Wayne is over there, in his little spot. So this really allows kids, adults, anyone, to take a thumb drive, go into a recording area, stick a thumb drive in a computer, hit a button, and behind a green screen, kind of record themselves. And then allows them to take the thumb drive back out, take it to their portable device, and/or download it, if it's sent to them electronically, and kind of edit it and make visuals and presentations and so forth out of it. So, Penn State really promotes the one-touch studio, so it's about $2,500.
Okay, and then what does that, what is that for, the $2,500?
That would include the cost of the program, buying a camera. So a lot of this, once again, we can do in-house, you don't really have to do that. Designating some type of technology, typically a laptop, that allows you to put a thumb drive in there. And then just kind of setting it up. So there is already designated space in the media center up there at the high school that we could actually set this up in.
Okay, so if that's at Dover Elementary, are they just going to try to play around with it there, and then if it really is a, you know, goes over really well, then maybe we'll put it in another school, and then another, okay?
And there's a lot of school districts that are putting, that are installing that. So, and I think I said high school, and so Dover Elementary, so we would designate a spot in there to install that.
Okay, and then just one more quick question. You had talked about the kindergarten at live, putting the, whatever it is on the wall, the table. So are you going to report back to us and let us know how that's going, or?
Yeah, we actually just went down this past Monday. We talked with the teacher about where to install the interactive projector, just to give reference to the audience of what we've been talking about. We know that we're going one-to-one, third through 12th, so part of our conversation is how can we bring those same type of interactive activities to kindergarten, first and second? So we know it might not be the device, but it can also be the stuff. So one of the things that we're actually doing down at live is we're working with a staff member to place into her room a number of pieces of equipment that her children, as well as other teachers, will be allowed to utilize. So, we found this whole interactive display piece of equipment that allows anything that it projects on to become interactive. So, we're so used to a Promethean board or SMARTboard, technically now you don't even need the board, you just need a projector. So, this allows you to take a projector, you can project it on the floor, you can project it on the wall, and wherever it touches, that space becomes now interactive. So, and it's about a fourth the cost of a SMARTboard, or a Promethean board. So, we're getting that to be set up. We ordered a SMART table for her classroom, 30 iPads, and then also that interactive board, and I'm missing the name. It looks like a giant iPad, for lack of better words.
Smart table?
A smart, no, not a SMART table, the projection tablet. And the nice thing about the projection tablet is as the teacher's writing, when the kids are holding the iPad, it actually projects right onto the iPad, and the kids are able to actually watch the teacher as he or she is writing on the tablet. So our goal was to have those set up into the teacher's classroom, to allow her to kind of play around with it, get some feedback from Dr. Weisling about how it's gone. I know that other teachers around heard, so they want to kind of bring their kids into the classroom, because we want to make sure that, you know, that we give equitable opportunities for all kids, that it's just not a third through 12th grade thing, that all of our kids are able to engage with technology in a way that's age-appropriate for them.
So that's a plan for K to 2, then?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Under item L, the exonerations, I was wondering if we could get a little bit of an update there, what, there was a lot of requests there, and have we reached a point where these are no longer going to be pursued? And are they being turned over, like, to collections, or are we rewriting them off completely that they're not coming?
Many of the exonerations on those lists are being turned over to the Tax Bureau for delinquent collections.
What's the history? What kind of expectation that we'll ever receive those, once that happens?
We do receive some per capita money back. I mean, when you have a $5, $10 tax, it's not a ton of money. And actually, I just had received a memo or a letter from York Tax Bureau that, or the York County Board of Commissioners, that they are considering doing away with the administration of the per capita taxes, which is going to put, you know, a much bigger burden here at the district level.
Is the amount that is in question here tonight an unusually high, low, or average?
No, it's about average for yearly.
Any other questions on human and fiscal resources? Okay, Safe and Supportive Schools, any questions related to the two items listed there? Okay. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, motion carries. We do have another item under human and fiscal resources upon which to vote. I would move to approve the appointment of Kelly Mefford, Intervention Specialist and Dean of Students at Dover Elementary School, effective the beginning of the 2016-17 school year, August 15, 2016, at a compensation rate of $62,545 per year. That's master step five per the contract. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Next area on the agenda is Board Assigned Representatives. First on the agenda is the Dover Eagle Foundation. I really have nothing new to report on that, because Mr. Patterson and Mrs. Just did some really exciting things here tonight. So we thank them again for that. York Adams Academy, Mr. Emig.
We will be holding our meeting next Tuesday evening.
Any questions for Mr. Emig? Okay, York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
I have nothing to report.
Any questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, LIU Special Education, Mr. Cherry.
I don't have anything other than the minutes I sent to you from their last board meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Cherry? Okay, Legislative Liaison, Mr. Ralhauser.
Excuse me. It was in the paper the other day, and the House and Senate passed a $2.5 billion. billion bill to pay off Plan Com, but they're waiting on the governor. And I was told the last two years we're going to get Plan Com, so when I see the check right in, I realize it's been accomplished.
Any questions for Mr. Ralhauser? Are you going to travel to Harrisburg to pick up the check personally and bring it back to us?
Well, maybe, you know. Three, I think it's three million or a little more. Be nice holding it.
Okay, PSBA Representative, Mr. Emig.
Nothing at this time.
Any questions? Okay, and last is Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman.
I do have a little report here. Okay, at the meeting, I, it was really interesting to learn how many large parcels of land there are available in Dover. And Kim Gross, she's with the York County Economic Alliance, which we were talking about tonight, and they do a lot of work. I'm assuming that the township pays a certain amount of money to her. I don't know that for her to do all this work that she has done to help us sell off parcels of land. So, she did, and I have it if anybody wants to take a look at it, these are all proposed sites throughout the township that could possibly be used for whatever, large buildings, industries, or whatever, so that they're, this is prepared, so that if anyone would call the township and say, "Hey, you know, I'd like to, I'm interested in putting my business out there, I need this much room," then we have this available, or we can show you these parcels. And the only thing is, that they're really not for sale, but if, if someone was interested and you took them to that, and then, you know, they, the person who owned the land may say that they are willing to sell it. So, that was extremely interesting. They are talking about putting a farmer's market out here, so I'm all excited about that. They're working on what, how to set it up, and they're working with other farmer markets, farmers markets to set that up. The only thing I'm concerned about is there's a big grocery store going in at the mall, and I'm a little concerned, that's supposed to be like a fresh produce-type place, so that may hurt us out here. Another thing that they said was that medical facilities are a great market, and you know they're cropping up everywhere. So, there's something else that possibly we could try to shop in that area and maybe get somebody interested in what we have here. So, the next meeting is next week, and I'll be going and see what else they can come up with. It's such a slow process, though, and I mean, they've been working at this so diligently, and they're really on the ball, they're, they're establishing a wonderful website and everything, but, you know, hopefully we can get some bites, sell some property, get some tax money.
Thank you, Mrs. Herman. Any questions for Mrs. Herman? Okay, moving on, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Cherry.
Just a few items. First of all, I'd like to thank Dover Elementary for all the artwork around the room, so thank you for displaying that, that wonderful-looking artwork. Also, I want to send a thank you off to Dave, Kathy, Katie, and Kelly for our first annual Safety Day, which was this past Saturday, so as they say in the South, a good time was had by all. We got lots of positive feedbacks, feedback from not only members here, but also other members from other districts who had been wanting to do something like that, but haven't really been able to see it in action. So, it was good, it was a quick turnaround. I think you and Mr. Cott were planning, and the next thing you know, Saturday was here, and like I said, via the pictures and other opportunities, we had to look at information. It looks like it was a very successful event, so thank you to you and your staff for getting that done. As you can see up front here, I continue to work on the mission statement update. So, one of my most memorable events so far this year was the opportunity to work with a group of middle school students, as well as high school students. They came over, I had the intermediate school, school students in the morning, followed by the high school on a nice rainy day. So, Mr. Nelson and I were running out to the vans, and we're completely soaked by the time that we got over there, but we got the kids over here safely. They went through about a two-hour exercise, in which they worked collaboratively as a group to come up with some examples of mission statements. So, what you'll see on this side are what the two groups of intermediate school students came up with, and what you'll see on the far right are what the high school students were able to come up with. So, it, it's wonderful to actually see the students, from their perspective, take on what they think their district should look like. So, up next, I'll be working with a group of parents that schools have identified, so I appreciate the principals for sending me those lists. Amy will be contacting them this week to set that date up, and then I'll be meeting with a group of staff members to do the same thing. My goal is to try to have something in terms of draft form up here posted for the month of May and June, for any staff member to kind of come in and look at, and possibly leave notes via Post-its, so that I have something to hand off to the board sometime over the summer in terms of two or three possible mission statements that you guys would like to select as the one for our district. So, it's been a really good exercise, and I've enjoyed the opportunity to work with kids with that. Recently had a meeting with Rite Aid, it kind of was one of those random emails, we get tons of emails, but this one caught my interest, because it was really a flu-shot clinic for students. I think we focus a lot on the adults, and one of the things we don't really focus on possibly are flu shots for student, for students. So, we're going to be working collaboratively with them over the next few months to come up with something to do in the fall, where we work with our older students in the elementary, middle, and high school to administer the flu shot for them for next year. I also had the opportunity to travel with a group of superintendents from Adams County, as well as York County, to listen to a seminar on public relations and communication. So, one of the things that I've worked with Jen to actually put into the budget via the intern slots are hiring some interns to work out of the superintendent's office to assist with communications and PR. So, the possibility of taking a look at three interns, one for the fall, one for the winter, and one for the spring, so that they can help communicate via Facebook, Twitter, community newsletters, events, help do some of the reporting in the district. Those are some of the things that bogged down our time, so if we could actually give it to students who are focusing in on communications or the arts that way, I think it would be time best served for them. So, we look forward to adding those interns into the office area next year, and that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Cherry? Okay, moving on to our second public comment period. Again, this is for items on or off of the agenda. This is a two-minute period this time, so if you would like to comment on anything, please feel free to come to the podium and state your name and address.
Nathan, are you skipping the comments and observations?
Oh, yes, I did skip that, I'm sorry. Miscellaneous. I'm assuming you might have something.
I have a question. For the Comprehensive Planning Committee that's coming on Thursday, the survey that we had posted online closed as of Sunday, and so we're going to be working on compiling that information. I just was curious as to what kind of a timeline you had in mind, in terms of when we could then get that information out to the public, or to people who could benefit from, from having that information.
I think that's really the work of the committee, so once you kind of go through all the subcategories and are able to define trends or identify trends, give us the information, and we can post it on our website, we can tweet it out, we can photo on Facebook.
I didn't know if you had a specific timeframe that you were looking at.
It's, it's really the work of the committee, so I would, I would think that over the next month or two, you'll be able to kind of triangulate and extrapolate some trend data and some talking points. I think the hardest part is always going through the comment section, particularly if you, depending on how many people participated in the survey, you know, you're going to have to read through all those comments and then try to find those things that are common.
There were 804.
Well, 804 comments to actually look through and read through, so. I think over the next two months, I think there's a viable.
Okay, thank you.
Timeline.
Anything else from any board members?
Yeah, I noticed the other day, and I didn't get to read the article, but Mr. Apgar was recognized in one of our local papers, and I didn't read the article, so I'm not sure what that was about.
Oh, I know what it was about. Yeah, Brown's Orchard, yes. Yeah, I guess a student, a student put his name in or something, and yeah.
A former student that's actually in college, nominated Mr. Apgar for Teacher of the Month, Brown's Orchard's Teacher of the Month, so they came and presented him with a basket of apples and a certificate of recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Rupp. I'm glad you read that.
Just kind of a sidelight to Mrs. Herman's presentation about industrial development, the email that you sent us regarding the new home sales in Dover was intriguing. It was quite a change compared to last year. We were the top district as far as increased value of new home sales in York County, which I guess people are moving into the district and paying more for their homes than they did before. So, I guess from an economic standpoint, that would be a good sign for us moving forward. So, for whatever was driving that, for whatever changes have happened that have made that happen, it's, it's worth noting. So, thanks for the email.
You're welcome.
Chuck here, Chuck, hey there, tonight, oh, there he is. Hey, your name was on here, Chuck, to look into about the, the welcome sign.
It's, yeah, I, we are working on it, and I'm getting back with them this week, I guess.
Okay, thanks, Chuck.
Any other question on the Crawletown School? You been getting any updated information, or have more information by Thursday as to if we have any possible people interested in it, or if it's just sitting there and nothing happening?
It's just sitting there and nothing's happening. So, by law, anytime there's a written bid that comes in, they have to present that bid to us. So, other than, we, originally, when it was first, when it first went up for sale, someone had called in a bid, the realtor asked for them to put it in writing, we'd never heard back from them at that point.
How long was our contract with the realtor?
I'd have to verify that, but I think, I want to say it was a six-month, but I'd need to look at it to make sure.
Maybe we need to come up with new pricing.
If we got our Plan Com money, who knows?
The what?
If we got our Plan Com money, who knows? We actually talked with Dave Nelson, we were looking at solar panels and some grant opportunities for solar panels, so, you know, we actually thought about the idea, if we couldn't get rid of the building, maybe that's an area where we can actually install solar panels and reap the benefit of kind of a payback from the electric companies for installing them. So, I think that's something the board needs to wrestle with. If we decide that we can't sell it, what can we actually utilize that space for, and how we can make it kind of a positive situation for, for our district? So, we were just talking about different building ideas, and we were talking about the possibility of a project, and what type of things that we would like to have, and we started talking a little bit about solar energy, and I know Dave had talked to somebody, a school district that had put two acres of solar panels in, and then that amount of money that's produced in terms of energy is then, that, those funds are then reduced from the school district's bill. So, no bites, but maybe possibly someday talking about how to utilize the land.
Either that or reduce the price.
Or reduce the price.
Because it's just deteriorating, sitting there.
Speaking of reduced energy costs, reminded me, I know Dave, you had brought a suggestion to us last month about possibly entering into a program with MedEd about reducing the usage, just, is that something that's still in the works?
We're proceeding with it. We don't have all the paperwork done yet, but we're getting there.
Anything else? My apologies again for skipping ahead. Now, we'll go to public comment. I won't repeat the instructions, I think you probably got them the first time around, so if anybody does have anything for on, off the agenda, please come to the podium at this time and state your name and address. Okay. Our next meeting will be this Thursday for committee meetings, beginning at 6 o'clock PM, correct? So.
And we will be doing the 2016-17 budget presentation at that meeting, so come on out to learn a little bit about the planning for next year.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sound move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you.